Good evening, everyone. It is, well, it'll start in less than 30 seconds. All good? Great. All right, welcome to the Iowa City Council Work Session for Tuesday, July 7th, 2020. And it looks like all of our councilors are here. And I see Ryan from UISG. All right, well, it's been kind of a long week. I hope people enjoyed the three-day holiday, if you had one. Wanted to just kind of jump in the agenda. And we'll start with COVID-19 updates. So we know that there's been a lot with COVID-19, especially with the uptick in our community. And so, would staff have any updates for us today?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Nice to see you all. I don't have any prepared presentations for you this evening. I will update you on a few things. We remain to have all our facilities closed to the public. We had hopes of reopening City Hall and some other facilities earlier this summer, and with the uptick in cases, we have decided to keep things buttoned up, and we do not have any plans to reopen City Hall or our rec centers at this time. The library is offering curbside services right now. And other departments are offering their services virtually, including Parks and Recreation and the Center. So I think I'll just allow you to have a conversation. Any council members that have questions, I'm happy to answer those. And we'll go from there. So I'll turn it back over to you, Mayor.
All right. Thank you. Well, we know that there's a lot happening with COVID-19 beyond the request of people not totally wearing masks throughout our community and individuals want to mandate that per order of the mayor. There's been quite a bit of discussion related into this item. We do know that around, I think it's two other places, two other mayors in our state has done that, made that requirement for their city. This is something that I continue to take under consideration at this time. I think that I at least wanted to address with the community that it is important that we do wear face shields and do social distance practices to the best of our ability whenever deemed possible. But wearing your mask is one way to, when you're in public, to really show others, you know, the opportunity that you are taking COVID serious and trying to decrease the risk of vulnerable individuals within our community. So I at least wanted to make mention of that. I do know that there are some items that are on our consent agenda. And it's related to grants, and I think we honestly can probably take that item and put it here if we wanted to. So we know that there's two grants that are in the consent agenda. One is CWJ's My Home to Yours, and we may have to ask Councilor Sellee, Mayor Pro Tim Sellee. And maybe you can advise us on this. She may have to recruise herself for this part of the discussion. So, so maybe we'll talk about the CWJ if councilors can want to talk about that. We will also talk about Better Together had a request as well. I think because Mayor Pro Tim can speak on that, we'll probably talk about we have to do them separate. So we'll probably talk about CWJ first and then probably have Mayor Pro Tim come back if that's agreeable. Okay?
I can do that. You want me just to leave or just what I do?
My assumption is you can probably listen in.
Yeah, because I can go, but I don't have to give you any input on this. Yeah, because I cannot do that. Yeah.
Yep, yep.
Can be silent.
Yeah, typically you leave the room, so I don't know if you want to, yeah.
Yeah, I, you want me to leave and come back later? And how I'm gonna know? You're gonna text me?
Any advice on this, Eleanor?
Well, I think if we follow the practice, I mean, generally, the prohibition is on having any discussion or certainly voting on an item, which we wouldn't be doing tonight, but I would say probably just to to get off the Zoom and get back on when we're ready probably makes the most sense.
Okay, text me when you're done.
All right.
Okay.
We'll text you.
Thank you.
Yes. All right. So in the consent agenda, there was a request for CWJ, My Home to Yours. And I think what we are hoping to do potentially is maybe discuss this, and then I know that I've had conversations with our city manager in regards to, you know, the request and maybe the process for the request. So maybe I'll have the city manager mention this at this time, and then we'll be able to have discussion.
And I'll actually bring Eleanor into this discussion, Mayor, because there was an attorney general opinion that was offered earlier this year that I think will influence just the process on how we move forward. So Eleanor, do you want to explain that?
Sure. Okay. So at the beginning of the COVID-19 pandemic, the state auditor sent out an advice to local governments about making, specifically about making grants to nonprofit organizations and reminding us of the constitutional prohibition, the Iowa constitutional prohibition on using public funds for private purposes. We, I think generally, the way we conduct business are in good shape with these kind of grants because we, for instance, with our aid-to-agency grants and certainly with all our CDBG and home grants, we have an agreement that documents the public purpose, indicates how the money will be spent to further that public purpose and has a reporting mechanism in place by the entity that's receiving the grant funds. It was a reminder simply of a provision that's been around for a long time, but I think we can expect that the auditors will be looking out for it. And so I think we want to be particularly cautious about getting any any distribution of grant funds documented in a grant agreement. So what I suggested to the mayor earlier this week was that if you want to make these grant funds, then the direction to staff be to prepare an agreement and bring it back to you at your next meeting.
All right, thank you. And so I just wanted to mention for the public, the Center for Worker Justice have a relief effort program, and it's called From Our How, From Our Home to Yours. And it was created in April, and it was really in response to many families in crisis with no safety net, leaving them unable to afford rent, utilities, and basic needs, and many immigrant families and their network are not eligible for unemployment or any type of federal stimulus fund. And CWJ has been able to pass along fundings that they've had to date, given between $300 to $600 per family that's in crisis. And so their request to the city of Iowa City is to help with their efforts by donating $25,000. And this money will be distributed to Iowa City residents. And that is their request, and so wanted to open it up for a council discussion.
I recognize the need. I recognize there's been enormous need in this community from the beginning. And I sort of wanted to reel us back a little bit to May because in May, we were talking about in larger terms, the sort of the financial arc of this and the assistance pieces, and the city manager had given us essentially an overview of where things stood financially with the city at that point, some possibilities for giving aid. I know that we carved out $50,000 out of the affordable housing fund for people who would not otherwise be eligible for state or federal funds. And that's, I think that's being distributed right now, although that money doesn't go directly, is my understanding, that money doesn't go directly to the people who have applied, but it ends up going to pay, directly to pay their their bills, whether it's rent or whatever it is. This is absolutely a worthy request, but here's one of my concerns. We haven't, a lot of other things intervened. We've been super busy, and we really haven't had a chance to step back and take a look holistically at the whole financial situation. What we can do, what's happening now with federal funds, what's happening with state funds, what we could do as a city on on relief for utilities, what we can do with enterprise funds. There's a whole there's a whole series of things. We also don't know quite yet, but we will probably within the next week or two, what's going to happen with the federal plus-up for unemployment. What I, I would really love to look at it all of a piece over the next couple of weeks, so we can really see the big picture instead of going at it piecemeal. And that's sort of where I'm starting at it from.
Typically, I know that I kind of wait on items, and I did want to just jump in and talk about this item. I know that we're going to talk about the next item here in a little bit, once our mayor pro Tim comes back, and that's related to Better Together. I know that there is a lot of needs in our community. We have businesses that have closed or are looking at closing, and the needs are now. We also look at individuals within our community. There are some that have definitely had the unemployment funds given to them that have helped them. Some say that it's even better than what their paycheck was, a best reality. But there is also those that haven't had that ability to get any, such as some of the undocumented individuals within our community. I think that when we look at all of the programs that have happened to date, PPP funds, other relief funds, they have come in short order. Here it is, you know, in July, we have done some COVID relief in roundabout ways. But this, we have individuals within our community, and I'm talking about individual residents, not businesses, people that are living day-to-day in need of some of these things to make it, you know, on a daily basis. And so although I do agree with you, where we need to look at the greater, the greater need, absolutely, we need to make that a priority. And we can certainly put that on the next agenda, relook at and visit some of the presentation that was given to us by the city manager, as well as Dennis, and try to figure out where, have some real conversations about that. But the one thing that I am fully aware of is that no matter what we do, it's going to be time-sensitive as far as like meeting the needs of the people. So these are tangible things right now that we can do. $25,000, in my opinion, for the residents of Iowa City is not a large, is not a large stretch. People's lives are really being affected, and I wish, you know, people have reached out and told their personal stories. I've been in conversation with people about not being able to pay their rent, not be able to pay their utilities. You can talk to the Crisis Center or Community, Crisis and Food Bank, and they'll be able to tell you some of the stories that they're hearing from some of the individuals. And so I believe that, yes, we do need to meet, you know, look at all of that, but right now, this is a tangible solution for a small portion of our residents that have needs right now. CWJ, from what they've written and from the support letters that have come in, is very clear that they're working hard to meet the individual needs within our community. And so I do like this proposal and would recommend that we approve the $25,000 so that staff can come back next week or two weeks from now, so that those funds and that agreement can be drafted.
I guess I have a question from looking at the request on, I guess, what are the qualifications and what's the documentation that CWJ is gathering to show that people qualify? I guess part of my question also becomes potentially, and I don't know if this would fall into it, if this is just city money, but we also administer or state and federal money flows through us, and there's the concern also about double dipping, which I know, and I've talked to some other providers, they're really concerned about consistent and accurate documentation of who's getting money and who's getting it from what pot. Otherwise, there literally is the potential that the city would have to, could have to repay money, and I realize this would be city money, but I just don't understand enough about some of those systems to be willing to support this at this point in time, because I don't want to end up, you know, having to repay part of that, part of CDBG money or something because people have gotten money from there and then got money from here. And I also have, when it's taxpayer dollar, I think it's important that there are specific criteria that are specified for who is getting the money and that there is documentation of that need. And none of that was explained in the request. So if we were to go ahead, I would certainly want to see that required in the agreement that the city was to generate for this.
If I could jump in, some of the things that we would normally look at in a grant agreement like this would be the prioritization of funds. So for example, with the $50,000 in funds that we provided for local housing and utility assistance, we made it a requirement as the city to make sure that those folks apply for state funds first, and if they have not applied for state funds, we'll do what we can to assist them. And if they're not deemed eligible by the state or they're denied for some reason, then we would look to do that. So I think that's one thing the council would need to consider. Do we want to prioritize funds? We do expect that as early as next week, we'll go live with our partnership with community on the CDBG COVID funds. And those undocumented residents are eligible for those funds, and that's for rent and utility relief. So our normal thought process would be, let's make sure the person applying for local relief first goes through the federal and state channels to see if we can use those resources first. And if those, if those programs aren't designed to fit the needs of those individuals, then that's where the local dollars come, and that allows us to stretch our local dollars the furthest and allows us to utilize those outside dollars first. So the prioritization of relief funds is important for you to think about. Income verification is something that we typically require on any type of assistance like this, whether it's, you know, COVID or non-COVID. And then the other thing specifically related to COVID is documenting the impact of COVID, and that'll be something you need to consider. But again, for example, in our $50,000 funds, the program that we designed there, we require that you be able to demonstrate that COVID caused you financial hardship. So we look at, we're then tasked with looking at what was your income before and after COVID to see if that's changed. If you've lost your job, if if your circumstances have changed, then this safety net of funds would be there. So prioritization of funds, income verification, and proof of COVID impact are our three things that I think the council should talk about as you consider this request and frankly, any request going forward for local relief funds.
Hey Jeff, I have a quick question for you. As far as like the particulars within an agreement, is that something that typically, or at least in the past, we know that, I believe so far, Shelter House has an agreement with us. Is that something that you kind of, that staff works with? The entity requesting the funds to kind of work out that detail and then bring it back to council? Because I think it would probably not be in our best interest to develop what those are, but that would be a conversation between you, between staff and kind of the individuals requesting the funds. Now, of course, we just heard what you mentioned, and some of those things I know are important to me as far as like, what would be the criterion for individuals to get funding? And I think that that is something that, at least from my knowledge, so far, that's been something that staff and that's worked out with entities. Now, we can certainly weigh in on that if there is something that we feel is very vital, but is that typically one way that this can go at this point?
Yeah, you know, it's a little bit different in this case, and here's why. With the $50,000 program that we created earlier this month or last month, that was a program we designed from scratch. So we identified the need, we put together the rules of the program, and then we approached the Shelter House to administer that. Now, they could provide us some feedback on what rules, you know, may be problematic, but that is our program that we designed that they administer. This is a, this is a program that's already been designed and is up and running. So it's a bit of a different conversation to go back to the Center for Worker Justice and say, we want to completely rework your program, and here's our rules. That's, you know, again, they've got a program up and running, and the fundamental difference from my understanding and just looking at the letter is that they give direct relief to individuals and families. And whereas in the relief programs that we design and that the federal government and the state put out, by and large, those are relief that are going to be directly paid to your utility holders, your landlords, and not directly to the families. So it's a little bit different, Mayor, in that this is an established program that was created with private donations, and now they're coming back to us and seeking public funds to supplement. So I think the council needs to figure out if you're if you're comfortable giving that direct relief to families, and if so, what's the documentation that you want to require in order to allow that? And really, the same is going to be for the Better Together program as well, right? That's a program that they've already created. They've launched with private funds, and we're asking to contribute dollars to there. So if there's any kind of unique twists that you want to put onto those funds, that's the type of discussion that you all need to have tonight.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Jeff, did you say with respect to the federal funds that, as, that are going to be run by community that undocumented will or will not be eligible for them?
They will be eligible.
One of the, I'll go right ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry. Just a clarification question for Eleanor, mentioning the Attorney General's advisory, and I think you said the state auditor. As far as public funds for ensuring they're for a public purpose, is it, is it your opinion that we could have a grant agreement that would satisfy that, or is sort of what Jeff was saying with this established program, I mean, do you, I don't know, does that make sense? Do you think we can get there or not?
Well, I think we could, I think we can get there. I think we could get there, but it's going to, as Jeff says, it's kind of a backwards process, and we're going to have to impose rules on a program that perhaps doesn't have such rules. I don't know what rules they have, but
Thank you.
Or create a separate program for the $25,000.
And following up on Counselor Burgess's question, Eleanor, for the clarification, so giving, giving money, essentially sort of giving stimulus, the equivalent of stimulus directly to people who are in need so that they can decide what their priority is, what they really need to use the money for, is that, can that be considered a public, a public purpose?
Well, I think you're doing that with the Shelter House agreement. It's just being given, it's not being given directly to the individuals, but to the providers. I don't know that who it's distributed to is the critical determinant in whether there's a public purpose or not. It would help, it does help in proving that there is a public purpose, or the funds have been used for a public purpose. That's where the documentation comes in. When there's questions asked about that. I mean, we give, we give money to, we have an aid-to-agency budget. We give money to nonprofits all the time for what we identify as community needs and that serve a public purpose. So I don't, fundamentally, I don't think this is any different than that. But I think it's tough just to give directly to the individuals.
I don't actually see where it says that the funds go directly to individuals. I'm reading it again, and it says, "Our project passes along payments of $300 to $600 per family to local community members in crisis, starting with those who are ineligible for other assistance program." So that does not state to me that it's being given directly to the individual or the family. I think we're making that assumption, but again, I believe that we have with the agreement, we can make that stipulation. That sounds like a very simple stipulation to be made.
Yeah, Mayor, I'll agree. I am making that assumption based on that language, but I don't know how they're administering the program right now.
Yeah.
Well, I'm pleased to hear that it appears we can we can get there with some form of an agreement. I mean, I think, I suspect all of us would agree there is a need. Beyond that, the questions I'm struggling with with these sorts of things is how can we most effectively reach the greatest number of people? So that's, that's one of my concerns. I'm pleased to hear that concept, as Jeff noted, of the city funding being kind of the last money to come in to help with the assistance. One of the things that I've been thinking about with respect to this is how we can use our utility, control over the utility fees to help with with assisting households, which might have a greater reach than this particular program, but you know, so that's something that I'm looking at or concerned with and thinking maybe an option and possibly one that could adapt to a more long-term approach, because I am aware that some cities, even prior to COVID, had programs where they would discount their utility rates for households. programs where they would discount their utility rates for households which qualified based on their household income. So you know, the, the issues we're struggling with here existed before COVID. I think they will exist after COVID. So to the degree we can try to anticipate or identify a way in which we might be able to assist in a more long-term structural way, rather than these one-time and cash infusions is something that I'm interested in.
I think what John said, though, one-time cashed cash infusions, I was kind of thinking of that. It seems like now things are maybe going to start trickling in and and be kind of a hit and miss here and there with requests for funding and rather than us maybe having or setting aside a big pot of funds and then assessing if there's proper documentation from the nonprofits that want the money. I trust, I've known the CWJ for many years and they've always been very truthful and honest about work they've done and been helpful to folks. So I would trust that they would closely monitor that the use is for those folks that were impacted by COVID. And I think it would be more like a partnership with them with these funds, because they would have to assure us that they're using them appropriately. But as far as the question of do we, do they hit and miss or 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 wait? And I'm not sure about that.
All right.
I would, I guess I would be more aligned with Janice in terms of trying to get a better idea of the big picture, rather than kind of doing these hit and misses on some of these as well. The other piece that I'd add is I'd also really like to get, I know that they've worked on it and discussed it at HCDC. They have some expertise and some ideas, and I'd really also like to leverage the, the knowledge and the capacity that we have on that city commission as we approach this as a whole. I mean, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not necessarily against 25,000 at this point, but I really do want us to and would really appreciate it if if we could get, before our next meeting, a really full look at this and the, and what we, the needs are and what the recommendations are and what the possibilities are for help, both short-term and long-term.
Okay, so I think I'm hearing, I kind of hear two things. I definitely hear that there's waiting to get the big picture. And I, I got a somewhat of a sense that people wanted to maybe see what, what type of agreement could be created. So what are people, I guess, it's so hard here, but I can see your faces. So maybe just kind of raise your hand if you wanted to wait and get big picture, but I think we need to wait, maybe hear from staff to see what that big picture might look like. I know that we have the slides, is that something that staff could bring? Big picture, but I, or are we at the point where staff need, where counselors need to either make decisions based on your presentation?
Well, it's been a couple of months, Mayor, so I can certainly kind of refresh that presentation and and focus it, because I think one, one thing that was clear coming out of there back in May was that the council seemed most focused on the support of social services and families in need. That was your highest priority, and I trust that that is probably still your highest priority. So we could focus that conversation a little bit and also update you on the larger financial picture for the city going forward, now that we have a couple more months under our belt. But in the meantime, you know, I can work with the Center for Worker Justice and try to result, you know, try to get answers to these questions. It's, it's hard when we don't fully understand the program to, to work it. So we can, over the next couple of weeks, get a sense, a better sense of exactly what their processes are and what types of documentation, prioritization, all those things, what might be acceptable to them? So that when you have that bigger picture, you can come back to this one and to Better Together and to whoever else with a little bit more precise idea on exactly what those, what gap those programs would would fill.
I could jump in, Mayor. I think that if we're going to be looking at the, the agreement that we would need in any event, I think it would be helpful to to have that more comprehensive look. So I'm sort of seeing it as doing both at once, right? Hopefully going towards the agreement, but also having the opportunity to be a little more comprehensive, because we've been talking about, you know, trying, trying not to be piecemeal, but also acknowledging the urgency of what's happening. So I think if, if we can kind of take that, both things at the same time, that might, that might work? Does that make sense? Because we're also not addressing right now where those funds might be coming from. If we agreed with the, the 25,000, and so with the, Jeff mentioning that the CBPG COVID funds for rent and utility relief are coming hopefully next week. I mean, I just, I just think we want to see what those options are, and there may be monies that would fit with that program without any concern based on, you know, application process we already have in place or a program that's already in place. So maybe we can get the details and work towards that. Does that make sense?
So it sound like from, what I'm hearing is that we'll, next, next council meeting on the 21st, we'll look at COVID big picture and we'll make, make some decisions there potentially, as well as, in the meantime, city staff, city staff will work with CWJ on what would that agreement look like? And that can also be at our next meeting.
I would just add, from, from my perspective, I think the requirements that are in that agreement with Shelter House, when we ask them to do the administrative work on that 50,000, and again, as Jeff said, that was not a request from Shelter House for that 50,000. That was a program we established, and then we asked them to administer it for us with these rules that we put in place. And to me, when we're talking about taxpayer money, I think those three pieces that are a part of it are really kind of our fiduciary responsibility to the city taxpayers. So I think that prioritization that people have to first apply for the state and federal money, and if they don't, then they are eligible for this money. I think it's important that that income verification is done so that, you know, we can assure our taxpayers that the people that are getting this money, you know, need it and deserve it. And certainly if we're saying that this is to help in relief of COVID, then there should be some documentation of the impact of COVID on their income. So to me, those, those three requirements that we put on that $50,000 would be certainly reasonable to put on this additional 25, even if somebody else is administering it.
The one thing when I look at it is not just limited to the rental, is to other things related to basic needs. And so I, I would suggest that we give this to staff and to CWJ to have the conversation, because one of the challenges that I know with a lot of the programs that we create for low-income individuals, there are so many barriers. And I've been surprised at the process when we're talking about PPP. And, and people got money with no barriers. And so I believe that if we can give it to staff and work with CWJ, and then they come back, and then we can make a decision at that point. But I do hear what you're saying, and I, and I do respect that. I think that theirs is not just limited to rent, their request. And so, and the other thing is that we're talking about, CWJ has been a champion in specializing with undocumented individuals. And so when we're talking about safety nets and places to go, I mean, it's CWJ, but so that would be my suggestion is that we give it to staff. I would, you know, I think that those should all be considered. And then staff, you know, do like they do with a lot of things, and they come back and share what was mentioned and where they are with the request.
Yeah, I agree with that. I just, to me, when this is city taxpayer dollars, to me, those three requirements that are, that we put on that other money are really minimal requirements to show to our taxpayers that we're being prudent with the use of the money, that we truly are helping the people in need. So I think that's pretty fairly minimal in terms of the requirements. And I think, I think it would be helpful, and as you say, Bruce, you know, staff can run with this, but having an idea of, of if they have certain requirements, what, you know, what are their requirements other than, if they have any, other than what the city might impose on that? Mayor, if I can just add one more, excuse me, one more thing to the three items that Jeff mentioned that are typically found in our agreements. We're going to have to have some way, if we're giving pots of money to different entities for the same basic purpose, how we're going to figure out, you know, we have a trail to show that, okay, so from X entity, person A got reimbursed for, or got paid for rent in utilities, from, from entity B got paid for food, so that is going to be a little bit tricky, I think. But I, but I think we're all kind of on heightened alert because of the letter from the state auditor.
I think the other tricky part is going to be asserting whether this need is related ultimately to COVID-19. You know, was the person unemployed due to that? Their business had closed or cut down on the number of employees? So that it really shows that it's related to COVID, and I think that's going to be important and maybe an extra step to document, but, but we need to see that.
One of the challenges with COVID is that nobody's totally hiring, so.
Yeah, I just, I also wanted to support what you said, Mayor, with respect to the apparent laxity of the PPP program. So we're looking at some of these programs where enormous amounts, not of, not of city-backed dollars, but of federal taxpayer dollars have gone to businesses that are never going to be paid back and are probably, probably not really going to be accounted for. That's not our program, but it makes, it makes, basically what I would like to see ultimately as we go forward is be able to, yes, have some documentation, but really not have it be onerous, because people need money. So we need, we need to sort of do what we need to do, but figure out how to get the money out without scaring people away or, or making, or having them jump through too many hoops, because we really do want to meet the need.
All right, so I, if, are there any other comments before we? I'll probably ask our city clerk Kelly to contact Mayor Protim and have her join us again. While we are waiting for Mayor Protim, did we want to, there was one thing that I wanted to just mention to councilors about our listening post. Are there any ideas of what we want to do for listening posts during COVID-19? We've only had one this year that Counselor Taylor and I attended.
Is there a way to set up? Everything pretty much is by Zoom right now. Is there a way to set up Zoom meetings? People, if they don't have internet, they can also call in. And it could be at different times, I don't know, but it really would be helpful to be able to be in touch with people.
I agree with that.
I think the intent of the listening post is, is the personal interaction with these folks, and I think that that's difficult to do with the Zoom.
Mayor Protim has joined us. We took a little, a detour to talk about listening posts. We've only had one this year. Typically, we have four. So we've missed May already, and then the other two would be in August and November.
I mean, I agree that the benefit is to try and do these in person, but given that that is really about impossible right now, and especially, I'm going to, I'm going to jump back for just a second, Mayor, to the whole COVID issue, just as a reminder to people of the press conference that was held by Better Together, really highlight, you know, what's happening in Johnson County and the increase in cases here, and to really, really, you know, push and remind people to do the social distancing, face coverings, hand washing, et cetera, because that is all crucial to keeping these numbers down. It's crucial to opening our businesses back up fully, and it's crucial to our whole educational system in terms of the schools being able to open up in a, in a beneficial way for K through 12, as well as the university, which obviously impacts our economy incredibly. So I just kind of want to back up and say, and we've gotten letters, both pro and con, as you mentioned, Mayor, about doing the requiring the face coverings, and we've gotten the opinion from the city attorney that we can't do that. But I would just strongly, strongly encourage everybody to read that information, think about that, and do it when you're out in public, because it is crucial to our recovery. It's crucial to people's health, and it's crucial to our, our economy and our educational system, so.
Well said, yes.
I feel like I'm talking a lot, but basically, it's, for me, it's collective responsibility. We have a lot of essentially rules of the road that we follow in order to save lives and preserve lives. We wear seat belts, we stop at stop signs, we drive on one side of the road. That saves lives. Wearing a face covering helps break the chain of transmission, and it really does save lives and save our businesses. And I think it's also going to be a main topic of conversation at the joint entities meeting on the 20th.
I was going to talk about this later, also at the end, when we talk about personal things. But I think in light of the alarming continuing rise in the number of cases in Johnson County, I would just kindly ask everyone to do what they can to limit the spread of the virus. And what's being done is proving to be insufficient so far. And we're continuing to hear of businesses in the community needing to close due to their employees testing positive. So please wear a mask or a shield when you're in close proximity to other people, because it has been shown that face coverings are effective.
I think we've lost you, Counselor Taylor. It's broken up quite, oh, there you go.
I don't know how far I got then. I just was going to stress the social distancing and, and that we, as a community, can't afford another total shutdown. So, you know, just encouraging, you know, to keep our local economy going and same time benefiting people's health and welfare, just to stay safe and stay well and wear masks and social distance.
Great. Go right ahead.
I'll start my video. I just want to, in response to what Susan said about the mask issue, I just want to clarify that you've all, you know, seen my opinion on or my brief opinion that I gave to the reporter yesterday about that. And it's a little more complex than you can or can't, so just want to be clear about that.
In response to the listening post, I wanted to just make sure that we kind of give some direct, we understand where we want to go. So we do want to try two more opportunities, maybe in August and November, for listening posts via Zoom. Opportunity, is that correct? I'm seeing some shaking of heads, I see at least four, so we'll go with that. And so we'll have staff come back. Do we have the names of individuals? It seemed like to me we had already determined the names of who wants to what, but maybe we'll pick that back up at our next meeting. So maybe we'll get some dates, some, some dates and some. So maybe we'll get some dates, some, some dates and some who wants to do what. So we'll pick that back up. All right, we will go back to COVID-19 updates. Mayor Pro Tim is back with us. Welcome back. And so we will discuss Better Together at this point. And I guess, maybe I'll just give a recap because I feel like we've, we've made, we've kind of made a decision with Better Together. Am I correct to say that, councilors?
When?
Oh. So. So I guess what else? As far as like waiting to.
Mayor.
Yes.
Just for Mayor Pro Tim's benefit, I think, I think what, what I would say is that you, in the decision you made about CWJ and the process you arrived at, it's logical to apply that same process to the request from Better Together.
Okay. All right. So what she just said, and so I think to explain the process of what's going to happen is next meeting, we're going to have city manager give us the overall view of COVID-19. Update the slides and, and such, and then in the process, we'll work with Better Together. Should that be the avenue that Better Together want to go with, as well as CWJ on discussing terms and conditions? Should there be an agreement created?
What, I mean, what? No, like this, I cannot understand anything.
Okay.
We need to discuss better together.
Okay, we can discuss better together.
Yes, because I wasn't, yeah, I don't know what
Yes.
to discuss.
Okay. So essentially, I, I guess from my, I guess my position is that we, for Better Together, we have staff work with Better Together to work out and understand terms of the funds and how they want to spend it. And then staff can bring that back to council next meeting. And then during the meantime, while we are wanting to get a better picture holistically of where we are with COVID-19 requests and our response efforts, staff has been asked to bring that back to us, and I'm expecting that we'll have that next meeting on the 21st.
I don't know, you guys are kind of give me conclusion. That's why I don't know where everybody's standing and what they are.
I, I think it's a little difficult because we just had this conversation, and I know that, you know.
You was discussing both of them at the same time? That's what you're telling me?
No, we did not.
Okay.
Mayor, I would say that you haven't discussed the notion of whether you want to give money to Better Together. If you do, I would say the process that you went through, that you talked about with CWJ would be the same for, for Better Together. But I, I don't think you've had the conversation about whether you think individual relief as CWJ is doing is a worthy expenditure, whether what Better Together is proposing is a worthy expenditure.
Okay. All right. That, that, that is fair enough. So we'll open up the conversation for thoughts on Better Together and their funding request.
Well, I guess I'll start. I guess I would support it. I've had some conversations with Nancy Byrd. We certainly have the individual needs within our community, which we've discussed and, and need to support. But we also have economic issues, which involve, then, then can trickle down to the individuals in terms of jobs and businesses staying open or staying closed. And so this is a way to, you know, try to encourage and leverage shopping in the area to help keep these businesses open with the gift cards that people can get if they spend a certain amount of money. I think Better Together has kind of set those numbers a little bit on a higher level to try and actually support people spending more money than maybe they normally would. They can only submit, I think it's three receipts, and they have to total at least $150 to qualify for the gift cards. So from an economic standpoint, I think it's a worthy cause, and we certainly, our money is going to be added to a lot of money from various financial institutions and hopefully from the other municipalities to support the retail businesses in the county. And we need to remember that I think a little bit over 50% of the retail business in the county resides in Iowa City. So this can really benefit Iowa City.
All right.
Well, I too also, you know, I'm supportive in principle with the with, with the idea of assisting with this program. And then as Eleanor said, I think the, you know, the devil, so to speak, will be in the details in terms of making sure we have an agreement as we move forward with that program that we're all comfortable with.
I'm sort of of two minds right now. I'm not sure where, I haven't decided where I come down on it. I would like to see if other entities in this, in this county are going to, are really going to contribute to it, and if so, how much. I'm also, as we talk about COVID, I'm also really mindful of the, that, that one barrier for a lot of people is maybe they don't have a face mask or they don't have a face shield. And I, and this is sort of a different topic, but not completely. I'd really like to see us invest a chunk of money in in those things so that they can be distributed perhaps through Project Better Together, perhaps through businesses to help, to help businesses stay open so that people can go in safely.
Yeah, I, I think conceptually, I also, I'm not opposed to this kind of support, but I do wonder about with the agreement that we would come up with, similar to, you know, kind of like just making sure it's serving that public purpose. I, I'm favorable to, to asking staff to go down that, that road for this project. I do also, though, I, I hope we can have the comprehensive overview when we talk about that, that we're, we're looking at the possibility of city support for PPP, PPE, personal protective equipment, face shields and masks for the community. Again, whether that's distributed through businesses or, or somehow through the city itself, I think I don't want to lose sight of that. And, and I think kind of what we're coming up against as we talk about what's the best way for public funds to reach these purposes is really how can the city be most effective in supporting COVID relief? And I, I, it feels a little bit like we're putting a square peg in a round hole with some of this and, and, and we need to do that when we're being responsive to specific requests, to see if we can be responsive to those requests. But I really do like the idea of trying to look holistically and see what can we do on the utility front. We have on our agenda this evening the relief for the parking permits. And so I think if, if we're entertaining that, you know, we need to be looking at what are, what are the different tools that we have in our toolbox. So yeah, I'm, I'm favorable to moving forward with the, coming up with the agreement for this one as well, but make sure that we're having that big picture conversation with our next meeting as also.
I agree with Counselor Burgess. Because I think we have to be fair and consistent and with our discussion with the CWJ issue, and I'm very supportive of this too. I, I support the downtown businesses, and I think this would be an excellent project, but I, I think that we need to hold them accountable to the same requirements that we've, we've done in the other group that's asking for large funds and, and have them work with the staff as far as coming up with an agreement.
I don't believe that this is limited to only the downtown district. I think it's for local businesses within Iowa City. And I'm not sure if it extends beyond Iowa City, because I do know that this program, the fund, there's been funds asked to, I think it's all businesses here, and it is, it's all businesses. Yep, it's all businesses here in Johnson County. So one of the, so I'm not sure if our funds will be somehow limited to businesses, business owners here locally, or if that's too much of an ask and is all put into one pot. I guess in theory, I am very aware of the hardship that business owners, some business owners do have during this time. And certainly, this is one way to stimulate the economy to make sure that businesses continue. Just like this probably isn't one of my first priorities to vote on, is something I will consider to vote on. What I would like to see is kind of that agreement created. Personally, I think there could be other ways to kind of stimulate the economy while supporting the most vulnerable individuals with lower income within our community. But this is one avenue that Better Together is working on. And so I can, you know, take a further look at it, but I do want to see that comprehensive and maybe see what the details are of this agreement at our next meeting.
Okay. Is, Mayor, I.
Yes.
Okay, you know, I I talked to Nancy Byrd about this, about this, I guess, Mayor and I, we were talking, but we never talked about what the requirement for business. How can we refine business if they, if they really lost or they did not lost? Same thing like, you know, if we can't refine something with individual. You know, what Susan Mims just said, she said, this is how business can you open. And I just believe also anything else that it will help, you know, people in the community continue their life, especially the people who cannot apply for another, you know, programs. Yes, I'm going to speak about, because I don't want to speak about CWJ. I'm going to speak about what the $50,000 that we give, being given to the shelter house. So the same barriers that happening there, it will be happening when it's been your that maybe as a people will come and ask you for money for. The shelter house programs, even though this is a city money, but we make it difficult for undocumented people to be eligible for that. First, they are not eligible for the federal fund. Second, the verification. You have, I'm sorry to tell you that, but you guys don't know anything about undocumented people. Because, you know, what happened is, if the city is saying that you have to show your loss of income from before March and now, okay? But you know how the undocumented people work? Do you know some, what, what type of informations they use when they apply for work? Do you know that this could be completely different from the renter agreements name and the way they can work? You know, those people, they cannot provide the document to show that they lost of income, even though they did. Okay, and also the safety net that, you know, we talk about the immigrants, the undocumented people, they scared to just to go to our organization that will take their data. And they don't know if they're going to share this data, if the, you know, FBI just came to their house or somebody else came to the, I mean, to their place, you know, how we can know that this document, you know, all this information is not going to be used against those people. That's why they don't go there and apply. They scared. They just scared. You know, and this is, we really make it very hard for them. I remember I've said something about when he come, proposed, how can we use this money for the community? All of us, we agree for non-profit organization, but he also mentioned, he said, we can give it direct support to the individual, or we can do it for rent, or we can do it. I remember that conversation. Maybe he can correct me if I'm mistaken. But, you know, help me, just supporting Better Together and also look at the community needs. I see the community need is, is, is high. And I know that there is business need, there is no doubt. But I want to see the city be fair enough applying everything for the community. And also require all them, for, you know, require documentation to provide money for each, you know, like group of people, whether they are business or individual. If I require for, you know, the shelter house to ask them about all this documentation. And, you know, I will also ask the business people to require all the business who are applying for, they benefited out from this, about all the question, about the government documentation that show loss of income. You know, I, I, I really, I'm not going to do anything. And I feel like you guys are, you know, you want to postpone it until you get more information. I also wait until I get the same information, and I will see how can we be applying the same rules? You know, requiring on one hand from the shelter house to collect all this information, are we going to require the same thing from business? At that moment, I can vote.
Any other comments on Better Together? All right. We are moving on to our next item on our agenda. And that is continuing discussion of our resolution of of Black Lives Matter movement and systemic racism in the wake of the murder of George Floyd by the Minneapolis police and calls for action from protesters and residents.
This makes it sound that we're still on the COVID-19 or Black Lives Matter? I don't know, but.
Yes, we're on, we're on Black Lives Matter. We just moved to the next item.
Before. Yes. You just move very fast, you know, and, but, you know, I just really want to also, I want the city to, to look into back to the shelter house fund, and, and I will request that. There is a lot of people, they cannot pay the month of June. And month of June is already here today is June what, it's June 7, I guess, 6, 7? July 7, I mean, and the month of July is not being covered by the shelter house. We have a lot of people who, when they, I'm not even talking about undocumented. I'm talking about people who are really documented and they, they cannot apply for the, you know, the fund for the federal. They need the month of July. They, they just lost their job after March. And they need, they need the month of July rent. And I know my understanding that this is not one of the criteria, they cannot apply. I'm requesting the city to modify their, you know, the rules and adding July as, you know, another one of the months, because we already in the month of July. Right now, people start receiving, as soon as they will start receiving notice of eviction and everything because of that.
So it sounds, if, if I understand you correctly, it sounds like the agreement was for May and June?
Yeah, from March until June, I guess. But we, July is not there, and a lot of people are asking for July. They will be meeting all the criteria, but they, they are requesting for July. Same thing for utility.
Well, it would seem to me that we need to make sure the shelter house, that they've met all the previous months requests and applications before we start changing the rules to add additional months to it.
Maybe we can just give priority to the people who are applying for previous months and they receive eviction notice. But if we don't, we can give those priority, because that's what I'm, I believe you can check it with, you know, a lot of people just apply for because I'm going to tell you something, the immigrants people, if they, they, they use their credit card to pay the rent, they are not going to make the rent late because they scared to be homeless. So some people, they, they went and they, like, have a loan or, you know, they, they ask somebody to pay for them the rent of June and the rent of May, and they, they find help by, by any means, like, maybe you take a loan from somebody, maybe you use your credit card, maybe any, anything. But now, that's why it was a long time ago, asking if we can have the help immediately when we get the $400,000, but we have to wait for the guideline from the federal, of course, that's, that's something not in the city hand, but, but. But, but right now people, they figure out, they figure out a way to pay that even though they are in debt by doing that. But most people, they scared that if they don't pay it, they will be evicted. That's why they, they figured it out, but now they are really want July month. But if the shelter house have a lot of application for, for those months, I agree, that can be a priority. But this is could be the second priority too, like.
I guess just my thought would be if, if they have more money, if that fifty thousand meets the needs that were originally specified in the agreement with the city, then I have no problem with changing the terms of that agreement to include additional months. But my understanding is they have not used all the money and they have not met all the needs, based on the current agreement. So I don't think we are ready to make changes in that agreement.
You may be. But don't say we.
I do wonder if.
I want to hear from everybody, please, because, uh, you know, sometimes one person will talk and yes, they mean the whole person, believe, the whole people. Please, I don't mind guys rejecting this, but I want to hear from everybody that you, that's what you want to do.
Yeah, I, I guess my, my, my entire question would be, and this would, uh, throw it back to staff as well as to, um, the shelter house to maybe get an update on some of the challenges that they're seeing with the requests. Um, if they're seeing an uptick in the request for July. Um, or we know that there are, even if there's one request where someone is not able to pay their rent. Um, I think that that's something that can certainly be discussed with staff. The other question that I have is, um, are we paying partial rent or are we paying it all at one time? Do you know that?
Yeah, Mayor, I can, I can answer some of the questions and Tracy Highschoon on the call, she could fill in some gaps and we can report back on anything that we need to. But as a reminder to the council, the fifty thousand dollars in local programs was meant to be a bridge program to get us from the point in which we were at to the point in which the federal funds became available because there was such a long delay in being able to use the HUD funds. Uh, so our intention was that this was a, a short-term bridge program. Um, as I mentioned before, we do expect that the, um, federal funds will be available, uh, beginning next week. Um, and those are going to be administered by community. So hopefully, our, our hope is that even for those folks that got some of the fifty thousand in local funds that they can now transfer onto the federal program for assistance. But certainly that, that local program can be expanded. But as I mentioned before, during, during your previous discussion, our, our philosophy until told different by you all is going to be to try to exhaust federal and state funds before we use local. So if someone is in need of July assistance right now and they've already maxed out the two months, uh, that, that we have as a cap on our, uh, fifty thousand dollar program, we're going to help those folks apply to those federal funds. And again, undocumented residents are eligible for those federal funds that will become available, we hope, next week. And then, uh, hopefully exhaust those federal dollars. Um, and then we turn back to, to the local funds at that point. So that's, that's been our intention all along. Um, we are happy to adjust as the council sees fit. And I know the shelter house will be happy to, 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 uh, work with us as we adjust our rules for the program that they are administering.
One of the questions that I have.
Can I just ask you a question, Jeff? You know, if the person, for example, undocumented person cannot provide anything of loss of income because they're in Belaya refused to, what we're going to do?
It's a, it's a good question, I'd have to, I'd have to consult with our staff and with the shelter house staff and what our options are at that time.
But I'm going to ask you something. You know, the shelter, whether the shelter house or any number of other organization, they don't know how to answer those questions because they don't know even, they don't know there is a person who working cannot bring verification of work. They don't know there is person who is working, they are not getting, they check, they stop. I, you know, they don't know that is some businesses they under the table, they don't know all this stuff. You know, consist with the people who know. You know, that's the problem, when you come and just provide the rules for any programs, you should bring the people on the table that they understand that community. So they can give you more information to make you able, with the rules that will benefit every single person in this community, not only like because those people, they, they know that typical fire, how it look like employees or in Belaya, there is something that, you know, nobody else know. And that undocumented people are facing. Uh, right now, they cannot even, if you require the loss of income, you are, not everybody going to do that. And also if there's people, they're going to, it will be stored in their computer, nobody are going to go and apply for this. What are you going to do for those people who are scared?
Yeah, so again, we, we can try to come up with some alternatives for that. If there are no workable alternatives, then it becomes a policy decision on whether you want to require proof of COVID impact or not. And if you're comfortable, uh, having someone self-certify and just tell you that, yes, I was impacted by COVID. If you feel that is enough information, uh, to, uh, distribute the, the local tax funds, then that's a policy decision that you all can make. So again, I'm happy to work with staff and, and, um, come up with some alternatives to, to address that situation that you're bringing up. And if no acceptable alternatives are there, then I think you all will have to decide whether, whether requiring proof of COVID impact is, um, something you still want to do going forward.
I do think that looking at what the barriers are, um, is very vital to ensuring that everybody in our community have opportunity to, um, move forward during COVID nineteen. So I do, I do believe that Mayor Proten brings up some good, uh, points when it relates to, uh, undocumented individuals. And so what I would suggest is that, um, quite honestly is, for staff to work with not only the shelter house, but work with someone that kind of knows the undocumented, um, community specifically to learn what may be some of the barriers so that we can be fully informed and make adjustments or suggest, uh, adjustments moving forward. Because we do know that undocumented individuals within our community, you know, they do live in fear and we need to be, we need to do what we can to ensure that they can also be, um, successful and maintain their livelihood during this time. So, um, I don't know if anyone else has comments?
I guess I would just say, Mayor, that if, you know, we were premising this on making sure we have an agreement, with the organization that would be administering the funds that would meet the, the, the legal need for serving that public purpose. And if, you know, I, I personally would be comfortable with a self-certification if that, if that meets that threshold. I mean, you mentioned the, um, federal program with the PPP funds and that was how that, uh, documentation of need occurs is that self-certification. So personally, I'm comfortable with that level of documentation if it, if that meets our, the legal requirements.
I'm, I agree with Counselor Burgess on that. And I mean, it's, it is in our interest to ensure that people are able to stay in their homes, to be able to ensure that their kids are able to stay in their homes. And so what, as, as we look at how these agreements are formed, uh, I, we, we have an absolute, we have an obligation, um, to, to figure out how to do this so that we serve all our residents while meeting the legal requirements. And I'm sure that we can do that.
Also, the, the thing that I really want to say to you, all of you guys, that whenever we have programs we would like to distribute money or we would like to do anything, please, we, you know, the staff doesn't mean they know everything. You guys don't know the whole community, you don't know the refugees, you don't know the immigrants, you don't. I can understand you know that typical Iowa one because that what everybody know who born here, but you have people from another cultures. You have people from another background, you don't know what their needs is, you don't know how things will be like, like working in their cultures. That's why, why you don't conduct people from those community to have a seat on the table and help you come up with rules? If they are volunteering to do that, they are not asking the city to pay them. They can come and do that. And, and I, I was really pushing this for all the entity, not only Iowa City, even the school, you know? We, we need people who look like the community to make the decision and to make the rules for how we can distribute something. But only not the staff, because how can I know the staff know about undocumented people? How the staff will know about refugees and, and somebody else? Please make a committee of people from, like, especially the nonprofit organization, like the Crisis Center. They know the need of some kind of, uh, you know, the, the community, other communities, like C W J. A lot of, you know, people, if we can bring those people and say, yeah, we're going to come up with rules. Can we just have, have a seat at the table to come up with the rules? This is city money. We are talking about city money. All the time when we receive something from federal, from federal, yes, we have to obey the, the rules. But this city money, bring the people of this city and let them have a seat on the table and discuss how can we use this money? And what the rules that we're supposed to be applying. Because it feel, I feel like the staff, when they come up with something, you are very restricted. What's the difference between the city money now and the federal one? Even, you know, the state one, the state money, nobody can apply, the application is very difficult and people are not getting even the help.
Mayor Potenzelli, I, I totally agree with you and I can echo what you're saying if these other folks don't understand the implications. I have gone, and as you know, I've gone with you on many times or sat in on many wage theft cases. And the amount of that that goes on in this community, uh, especially with the contractors and the laborers, how they get around paying these folks even social security. So you're right, you know, they're paid cash or they're not paid at all. Their hours are, are mismanaged. And so, yes, I understand what you're saying as far as that. So I think, uh, that comes into play with, um, Counselor Burgess. And I, I agree with her that, uh, self-certification would be acceptable, uh, to me on that. I, I would believe these folks because I've seen through your, your C W J, uh, what these folks have gone through.
All right, anything else on COVID nineteen? We'll move on to the next item, which is, uh, continuing our, our discussion on Black Lives Matter. Um, I know that we are, we concluded our last meeting, stated that we're going to have on the twenty first. Listen to the community, there's a few things that's going to be, um, highlighted there is, which is really listening to the community on the twenty first. Um, but, um, we can take this time to give any updates that we would like.
Well, I, I had a question on the, the status of the work groups. You know, there was the discussion at our, at our last work session of the formation of four work groups. And as I recall, we were asking for, what, you know, which, which of those groups each of us might be interested in participating in? Is that still something that we are to be looking into? Because I mean, I have an interest in working on the housing and policing work groups. So I, I didn't know if that was something that we were going to be indicating our preferences, but that's, I'll just say that that was something I was interested in.
I guess it was my understanding, and but please chime in, that we would, uh, kind of wait for that public input. And then we would go further into discussion on, you know, the, the work groups and, and such. But that was just at least my walk away from the last meeting.
Did, did we want to hear where, what progress has been made and what the possibilities are for, um, looking at the review of June third?
So that would be city manager.
Yeah, I'm happy to, um, I'm happy to talk about that. So, uh, your resolution requests a report, um, by the city manager on the June third protest events and our involvement in the Dubuque Street, um, tear gas and flashbang response. Um, I'm looking for some direction from council. Um, as I previously indicated, uh, I, I first wanted to check with the state to see if they'd be interested, uh, and available to conduct the review. And, um, uh, after talking with them, I, I agree with their conclusion that it's probably best that the state not be involved, even, even though a, a separate entity I had in mind that wasn't necessarily involved at the, in that incident, uh, it still is a state agency. And, um, I think, uh, having somebody removed from that incident is probably best. So, um, I think the council has two options and it probably depends on the, the extent of the review you're looking at. I am, uh, willing, uh, certainly to work with the city attorney's office and, uh, provide you a report on, uh, the factual, um, uh, events that happened that night. Uh, so, you know, who was involved up at Dubuque Street and the timeline of events and that, that sort of thing. Uh, and allow you just to, to review that factual account of what happened, uh, trying, uh, to, to, not include any, um, analysis from my part because frankly, I'm involved in that, uh, in, in that chain of command as well. Uh, other, uh, other option would be to, to seek an independent, uh, review uh, from another entity that has experience in reviewing critical incidents like this. And the city attorney and I have, um, had a couple of conversations with, uh, different firms that, that provide those reviews for communities across the country. Uh, frankly, we have never used, uh, a, a firm like that before. So that the two firms that we've talked to, um, uh, have, have not previously worked with the city. And, um, I think the benefit in having them, uh, conduct the review is that they would come in without any knowledge of the, of the event. Uh, they haven't been involved in, in training our staff or, or really had any involvement in our policy development in the past. Yet they could, they could create an accurate account of what happens, uh, what happened that night. They could also analyze our policies and our training and suggest, uh, areas of improvement, uh, where, where we might need some more policy, uh, developed. And perhaps, um, what some useful training might be, um, in the future uh, so that those situations could be handled in a, in a different manner. Uh, so again, um, looking for your direction on which of those two options that you'd like. I will say the, uh, independent review, obviously we have to pay somebody for that. It, it, um, will require, um, uh, a bit of investment from the city to, to pay somebody to do that. I don't have quotes to provide you, but, uh, probably an hourly charge of some type to, uh, review the materials uh, that, that, from that evening. Um, and there's also, uh, probably no chance that a, a private review could turn around a report by your August first deadline. So, um, I think you're going to have to make a decision on what's more important, having that, uh, having that independent set of eyes look at it, report back to you and have that cost a little bit money and come a little bit later. Or, or just asking the attorney's office and, and me to, to prepare that, uh, prepare that account for you in a more timely, in a more timely manner.
Thoughts from counselors?
Personally, I think that an independent review, uh, agent would, would be beneficial. Kind of somebody totally on the outside looking in and re, really, uh, looking at all of the facts and what happened and interviewing folks. I think that would be helpful and, and to me, I think the cost at this point, uh, it, it doesn't matter. It's not that important, uh, how much it is, whatever the cost, it, it would be important to us to know these things.
I agree with Counsel Taylor, yeah, independent, somebody outside the city to do this.
I think it needs to be independent for a variety of reasons and, and that, um, that is the way to go.
I agree, it should be.
I agree. It should be independent. And I'm, I'm wondering if there might be some very basic information that could still be released in the interim if we're kind of trading the value of the independent inquiry with knowing that it'll take more time. I don't know if there's just some, you know, very, very basic information that we could provide that might at least answer some of the questions we've been getting. Like you said, Jeff, without analysis, the just kind of thumbnail facts about the situation and perhaps providing that in the interim.
I would agree that public is looking for something independent. I don't think for the public, I don't think something coming from staff is going to be acceptable.
I also don't think it's fair to staff to ask them to do that.
I would agree.
Yeah, independent analysis is the way to go here.
So independent analysis, analysis it is. And then I know that Counselor Burgess just asked about maybe some, something from staff in the interim. Because we anticipate it will not be August 1st, that they'll be able to have this independent review done. What are people thoughts there? Or do we just wait and have it all come out at one time?
I guess I would leave that up to staff discretion if they feel like there's things that they can pull together and release that don't necessarily compromise the independent review and that are just super factual, can be documented as factual. So I guess I would respect staff's opinion on what they would do there.
I really prefer like all of in one. I don't, I just like have like staff say something, somebody else will come and say something. And, you know, we just need all of it to be at the same time.
I think that kind of slicing and dicing is going to be really difficult to do. And I, I think it potentially undercuts the, the independent investigation. I, I agree with that and with Mayor Potem.
So I, I agree that we just kind of wait for the independent. And I see some not enough heads, so we'll go with that. All right. Any other item related to Black Lives Matter? Here and now, we're going to go to
Well, sorry, can I just update mayor? At our last meeting, Counselor Weiner and I were sort of deputized to talk with the Iowa Freedom Riders about the truths and reconciliation portion of where we're headed with all of this. And so just wanted to let folks know, we had a really good meeting yesterday afternoon, I think that was just yesterday. And I think it would be helpful to make sure that they are included in these, you know, conversations going forward. Certainly I learned a lot. It was very insightful to be able to have that real time communication and conversation with them. So I think for, to the extent of when, when we're discussing things that relate to what they may be able to provide on those aspects of, of this overall project with Black Lives Matter, I think that would be good to make sure that they're included going forward. And also with the, the work groups, I agree that getting, you know, we talked at our last meeting about getting, making sure we had public input. We didn't really, I think, set up a framework for doing that. And so if, maybe we could just talk a little bit more about what, what that looks like to make sure that we're not stalling in that process would be kind of my, my request for that, which hopefully we could do briefly.
I guess as far as the work groups and myself, my thought is we would kind of, you know, determine about how many people would be on the work group and who, how will we open up the, the opportunities for people to be on the work group? So, I mean, in, in general thoughts or in general terms, that's what I was thinking about.
What, what I hear Counselor Burgess say is two things. One, I would concur with, with her description of our meeting yesterday. And I do think it will be useful to have an IFR representative in real time, talking, talking to us in present when, when we're talking about these issues. And the, but I think she, she also mentioned the need for basically us to have a very basic or simple way to, in addition to having public comment at the meeting, to collect public comment in advance. Maybe that's just asking people to, to email views on certain topics. Maybe it's even setting up a separate email address or, or something on that, or I don't know. But I think that's what you were referring to, no Laura?
Yeah, I really agree on the idea that we need to have like IFR person with us when we talk about this. And we can just like make it a temporary thing until we, we finish from this and that's it. We's not like somebody like the, like Ryan, for example, this is going to be temporary. And after that, we done, after we done from this Black Lives Matter, hopefully.
Yeah. I, I guess me personally, and I'm, you know, I am not exactly on board with having IFR sit in on our meetings. When we talk about Black Lives Matter issues. I, I mean, I, I love and respect them for, you know, and for them getting the ball moving, moving for, for us to be where we are today, looking at Black Lives Matter. But when we're talking about the community of, of black people within our, people of color within our community, Black Lives Matter, I'm, I'm sorry, IFR is only one portion of that. We have Black Voices Project that's been out there advocating. We have many, many other individuals or groups out there that we may not even know about, that's been advocating for black lives. And so I don't believe personally that Iowa Freedom Riders has been that elected person to represent all black people. And so where I do, you know, appreciate and understand that we welcome conversation with IFR. We welcome conversation with Black Voices Project and whomever else is out there. I just attended another meeting with the, with a group of black leaders. That, you know, they're wanting, they're looking more at business opportunities and stuff like that, for the most part, but they have other ambitions. And so again, I, I believe that IFR certainly can contribute through conversation that we have one-on-one. I am also dedicated to ensuring that they're on any of these committees that are created by the city. You know, making, I've talked about having a placeholder for them and all of those independent committees, which they'll be able to be in real time there. But when we're talking about like council decisions and council conversation, I don't believe that that is appropriate at this time.
I guess I wanted to let you know, mayor, you know, IFR is reaching out to community. They reach out to Black Voice Project, if you don't know. They did reach out to them and Black Voice Project, we're going to discuss all the demand. And they, they, they will be with them involved. They try to make them involved with this. And they reach out, I don't know if Laura and, you know, Janice, they, if they heard from them that they start reaching out as a group. But let us talk about the fact that we are discussing a demand that brought, yes, it's about Black Lives Matter. And Black Lives Matter is not IFR only, is everyone, but they are the one who come like forward and submitted this. And also I remember when they come out with, with this, you know, demand. I was in a room with different organization included, Dream Center included, you know, representative for the Dream Center from the Black Voices Project, recently had a meeting with them too. And all those people, they come up with this, that they wrote the demand and they send it to the city council. They are doing things together. I don't know why you are not seeing that. But what I really want to be like honest, I remember when we have the Bike Master Plan, when we have the Dear Management, when we have like talking about employees and, you know, whoever brought that proposal is the one who come like for the climate action and all this. Whoever brought that proposal usually is the one who come and give us presentation. Usually is the one we go to them and ask them that. This is the same. Why we are not, we are treating this different. And I see they try hard to reach out to, you know, all the communities, the black people in the community. And we, our job is if we feel that they are not reaching out, we have to go invite that group to come and say, hey, we want to hear from you too. But IFR, when they see, when we give them seat at this tables, they discuss the demand that they proposed it for us.
I, I think, and I, and I respect what you're talking about as far as like having the, the, any of those special groups, you know, come and present. Well, typically those special groups like the bike project or the black, the bike group, that's like something that's been developed throughout the entire community, I'm assuming. I, again, this is not to discredit anything that IFR has done. This is not to say that I don't appreciate all of the demands that they've done. I'm black. So I, the things here, I want to work on. These are things that are very important to me. And so it, it, when I, when I look at just the opportunity that is being asked of us for IFR, I also have to realize that there are many people out there that would probably want that same opportunity. And there's, you know, IFR hasn't been voted to be the, the Black Lives Matter movement here in our community. They have risen to the occasion, which I really appreciate. So I'll leave it at that for now.
I guess, Mayor, I agree. I, I thank you, Pauline. I met with IFR yesterday afternoon as well, after Laura and Janice did and had a very, very positive conversation with them and really trying to get to know each other and, and, you know, where we stand. And the thing I said to them, and I've said these meetings before, I really, really deeply appreciate their passion and energy that they have shown. Because we wouldn't be where we are without them in terms of the resolution that we've passed. And the progress that we've made already, obviously there's a lot, lot more to be done. There's no doubt about that. But we've taken a significant first step with this resolution. We talked about the efforts that they have made already to reach out and communicate with other members within the black community and other organizations. And I was hoping to, by tonight, to have more information on that. And I told them, they were hoping that I would advocate for them having a seat at the table. And I, my response to them was, if you can show me that you have really reached out and are working with and coordinating with the black community at large, then I would support that. At this point, I have not seen that. And so I hope I will see that. But until I really do see that, I, I'm in the same position, you are mayor, that there are lots of constituents within the black community. And I don't think there's any one person or any one organization at this point that can represent the entire black community to us. But I welcome input from all of our black residents, not all residents, but particularly our black residents as we try to move forward on the Black Lives Matter issues.
Thank you, Susan. I, I, what I wanted to say was I think having a seat at the table and being a part of the conversation are kind of different things. I think anytime we would be discussing anything that would pertain to their requests, they, they should help us out and, and communicate with us. But I think as the mayor had alluded to, I, I think their, their important place are on those subcommittees. That's where their voices need to be heard. These are where their ideas are going to be talked about and they can bring other, bring forth other ideas. So I think that's, that's where they need to be on those committees.
Okay. Any other comments on this? We only have about two minutes before, well, about a minute before we need to take a break and then get ready for our 7:00 PM.
Since, since we don't have a lot of time, I thought we ought to, that we could have maybe the city managers walk us through briefly what they're, they now have up on our website in terms of essentially anybody can look and see where we stand with respect to any one item of the resolution.
You, is the council good with a, but a two-minute real quick overview to at least orient you to that?
Yes.
Okay. Let me share my screen here. Okay. So you have our homepage here and easiest way to get to it is just a slash with BLM. We'll take you to an update webpage. You can also access that page through our Office of Equity and Human Rights. So under city government, departments and divisions, equity and human rights will get you there as well. And again, it's under the Black Lives Matter heading there. So this landing page is a work in progress. We expect to be supplementing this with quite a bit of information over the next several months. Much of, is, is being gathered right now, but is really meant to give the public a place to go to, to get information on where the city stands with our efforts here. So just a brief summary and a bridge version, if you will, of the 17 action steps. We will have a, a summary section where we put more information about employee demographics, training efforts, those sorts of things under here. Maybe the history of things like the CPRB and whatnot, we'll, we'll go under there too. Any upcoming public engagement events will be here. Hopefully recaps of those events like we've started to post and then various documents that relate to this, to this matter. So most of what you see here is the resolution that's available in several different languages. The status report is, is available down here, but hopefully it's more easily found at near the top of the page. So as I click open this status report, I'll show you what we have here and I might have to share my screen a little bit differently here. I assume you can see that report now. Okay. So this is a, a very simple report, again, intended to give someone a very quick update on where things stand. We've categorized the 17 actions under the policy headings or the headings that you developed at your last meeting. These are all hyperlinked to one-page summaries of where we stand on these items. The next page is just a simple graphic to, to let the public know which items are awaiting further council discussion. So for example, the plan to restructure the Iowa City Community Police Department towards community planning. You all still need to have that discussion on how that plan is going to be developed. All the other items that you see here in the middle column are underway in some way, shape or form. In most of these cases, staff is, is gathering information or perhaps there's been a commission meeting on a particular topic. And then anywhere where you see a green checkbox is where some actions have been completed. So right now, these are fairly simple actions. For example, mayor, your letter to the sheriff's office on the MRAP or the preliminary budget information that we posted on the, on the website. The MOU with other law enforcement agencies on the duty to intervene are all accounting for these checkmarks. So it's by no means saying that the item is completely done, but just letting the public know that there's some progress. So again, you can go through any of these that you want to. You can scroll down and go through them individually, or you can link to them and you'll see a page like this. This is the duty to intervene. And every page is going to be the same. You're going to have the exact language from the resolution. So the, the community can be reminded of exactly what council's commitment was. A short summary of where things stand right now. In this case, there was a, a joint law enforcement meeting on June 19th. And you can click to see the duty to intercede memo that was signed by those law enforcement agencies. Again, go, go back down there. The next steps are laid out so the public knows what's coming next with each item. In this particular case, sta- uh, staff is, uh, right now, um, updating our general orders, uh, to reflect the, duty to intervene mandate that the council had. So yes, we signed this, uh, agreement with other law enforcement agencies, but we also need to make sure that's very evident in our policies. And we'll probably take it a little bit step further in our own individual policies. And so the next step for this one would be to have the CPRB review any updated general order that we produce. And that's common practice. Uh, so, uh, the CPRB already reviews our general orders as we update them. They provide feedback and recommendations to us before we, uh, before we, um, move forward. So, uh, again, that's just, uh, one page. Uh, there's one of these for every one of the action items. And so you and the, and the public can go through and, and, uh, get a sense of where things stand. Uh, we will link a lot of documents out of this report. We want this to be a very simple, concise summary of where things stand. Uh, but under, uh, as we, as we make progress in all these items, there'll be a lot of memos and, um, general orders and things of that nature that are attached to this report. So knowing that you have limited time, uh, that is a, a quick overview of the reports. Um, we would love some feedback on it. Obviously, this is a, this is an initial draft that staff put together. Uh, but we need to, to hear from you and hear from the public on what information is, is perhaps missing, what would you like to see, and what would be more helpful. Uh, so you can funnel any of that information, uh, to me, and if you get feedback from the community, uh, please do share that with us, and we'll make updates as we go along. Any questions before I close out the screen sharing?
No, it doesn't sound like.
Okay, that was pretty quick. I'm happy to talk with you individually, uh, outside of the meeting. Again, if you have feedback, just, uh, feel free to reach out. But hopefully you will find, uh, a few minutes to, to go through this website and offer some feedback.
Thanks for showing that to us. Um, and we will take a break and come back at seven PM, unless there's anything else right now that needs to be discussed. And we'll continue our work session at the end of our formal agenda meeting. All right, we are reconvene- reconvening our city council work session um, today, which is Tuesday, July seventh. And we started at five PM and we postponed the rest till tonight. So is there any item prior to the clarification of agenda items, which at this point we won't do? So we'll go into info, we'll go into info packets that really need council direction, but also if there's any info packet that people want to address. So we'll start with June fourth, info packet. Anything there? June eleventh, info packet. June eighteenth, info packet. Um, the one thing is we have two items that, um, one we already addressed, but the first one is IP three, is a memo from the city clerk about our proposed council meeting schedule. Um, it's September through December twentieth. Uh, if I remember correctly, all of those were the first and third Tuesday, as were, as are typical for council meetings. Are there any conflicts or?
The only thing was, um, Tuesday, November third is election day. Uh, I don't know how folks feel about that. I don't, we, we don't have anybody on the ballot. Usually if we have someone on the ballot, then, then we change the date. So, but otherwise, maybe it'll be all right to have that date.
I think maybe we've changed it anyways, haven't we? Jeff, Eleanor, do you remember?
I think we've historically moved off election day, uh, even if there's no local elections, just recognizing that the public may be uh, more in tune with that than what may be on our agenda. So we typically have moved it to the Monday, I believe.
Yeah, that sounds, sounds right. I would recommend that we do that.
I would be, yeah.
Okay. I don't like, we have a consensus there. All right, any other date of concern?
For December, I, I don't know, but, uh, I didn't wanna see that. Maybe I can talk to Jeff and the staff and see if we can have only one meeting on December. If they don't need it, not like really have to.
Maybe we could look at that when we get closer to see what we need and what people's schedules are.
Yes, that sound good.
All right.
Mayor, can I just, with the listening post, if it's gonna be via Zoom? I mean, really, if there's two people and they have a date in mind, or if you want me to email outside, there's not a whole lot to try to figure out on the, the backend for that, since we don't have to find a place.
So, yeah, I, so I know we're wanting it Zoom. And is your, and I guess I didn't really get your question.
Well, you were just gonna have, have me come back to it at the next meeting, but I'm not sure what I'm gonna come back with.
Okay, actually, it was who wants to be a part?
Okay.
But we can make that, well, because we need dates of when that'd be set up. So I don't know if you'll probably touch base with counselors. Maybe we can get who wants to do it in September. I'm, I'm sorry, in August.
And then figure out with those two people the date?
Correct. So maybe we can determine that now. And then we also have the one in November, so maybe we'll determine that now, and then you can just post what dates are, um, agreed upon amongst those. So who wants August?
I would just throw out a suggestion that between the August and November ones, we give Laura and Janice each an opportunity to do one of those, and then maybe, uh, older council members who's been around longer, um, pair up with each of them, um, on one of those. Make sure they get a chance on these next two. If they want it.
I'm interested.
I'll just add that, yep, I'll just add that, um, uh, Counselor Taylor and I, we did it in, uh, February, so we were probably not be a part of the, the mix.
I would like to do it.
All right.
Laura or?
That'd be great.
Yeah, I would be interested in doing one, because the, the last one that Maz and I did at Greenwood, nobody, nobody showed up. So, so I would be interested in doing one as well.
Okay, I'll do it with Laura. You do it with Janice.
All right.
And what month? Um, I guess I'll let you all deal with that offline, unless you have a preference now that you want Kelly. Um, do you all wanna, maybe that'll be easier for Kelly. Who wants August between Lauren, um, who wants August?
Laura, do you want August?
Okay, all right. So there you have it. Kelly, you're good?
I'm good, thank you.
Thank you. We're gonna move on to number, um, anything else with IP? June eighteenth? Here in nothing else, we're gonna go to number, um, we're gonna go to IP, June twenty-fifth. And there is IP four there, a memo from Parks and Recreational Director. Happy Hollow Park Baseball Field Infield Conversion. So, um, I know that staff want a little direction there.
Um, perhaps I'll, I'll introduce the, um, discussion on that. Uh, I hope all of you have had an opportunity to see the, um, letter that Michael Mullenbruck had sent to council last week, uh, in which he linked to a change.org petition asking for the restoration of the ball field, uh, which was, the last I looked, had been signed by four hundred and thirty-seven petitioners, some of which, um, provided comments as well. And it was, I, I found it to be a very thorough, eloquent, heartfelt letter, um, addressing the issues that, that he, he saw and that he feels, um, are indicative and as a long-term resident in Iowa City of the situation and condition as it relates to our system of ball fields in Iowa City. It took me a while to reach and connect with Michael. You know, it was kind of a series of conversations I had uh, with other members of the community that led me to, to meet up with him. And, um, he, he basically took the lead on the, um, kind of gathering the information from the baseball community and others, uh, setting up the change.org petition, which did draw from more than the ball, ball field community. I did, I did want to emphasize and, and expand out a little bit from his letter, uh, to try to speak to some of the issues, um, that I see as we consider this. And, uh, you know, I prepared some comments, which I'd like to share with you. First, I would, I would wanna say straight, you know, straight away that I, I do support converting back to the skinned infield. And, uh, that would be, uh, number two of the options listed in, in the staff memo. Uh, but I would also like to support number four, which is exploring partnerships with the baseball softball groups for assistance with the reconversion of Happy Hollow Ball Field and the possibility of converting other fields. And, and looking at this issue, particularly as it relates to some of our, our neighboring communities, North Liberty comes to mind. North Liberty and Coralville have done an excellent job, it appears from what I gathered, on, uh, forming partnerships to help support their system, which is, uh, I'll get into in a little bit here. Uh, but here, here are some of my thoughts on different aspects of this issue. Uh, the first, it has to do with the planning, park planning process. Uh, and, and we're, the question of changes to the field or ground surface came up recently with the Prairie Restoration Proposal. And ground surface, as we learned then, is an important factor in determining park use. In this case, the question of field surface meant whether the ball field skinned infield would be replaced by turf, thus becoming what staff refers to as a recreational field. This was a question which was not asked of the neighborhood residents or of the baseball softball community. Uh, I would suggest that any questions regarding changes to existing park use, whether initiated by the community or the staff, must be asked of park users at the beginning of the planning process. So we wanna make sure at the very start of any, any park improvement project that we, we address the question of how are the uses, uh, going to be changed? Uh, in this case, as we had with the Prairie Restoration, it's, it was a question of the ground surface, which was triggering, uh, a change in use. In terms of the ball field use at Happy Hollow, uh, staff's perception was that the primary users were the city's recreation division T-ball teams. And it was that perception that led to their proposing the turf infield, because that is adequate for that group. Uh, Michael's letter and petition comments were consistent with verbal and written correspondence I received when asking about Happy Hollow's ball field use. In normal, non-distancing times, the ball field in the correspondence I received and that he received, the ball field is used every spring, summer, and fall by all kinds of people, including baseball and softball teams, both formal and informal, and kids and adults. Activities include slow pitch softball, pickup games, batting practice, even kids being kids just running around the bases. So what that suggests to me, and I think to Michael and others, was that a ball field in a neighborhood setting will typically see a different pattern of use than a ball field in a complex. Field rentals are, are really a partial measure of that, of that use. Michael also, I think importantly, noted that the ball field skinned infield surface does not prevent its use for other recreational activities. That means that multi-use of the field is both desirable and encouraged and can continue, uh, with a skinned infield. However, if you remove the skinned surface, it eliminates the use of the field for softball and baseball. Uh, in terms of the ball field supply and demand, uh, the ball field clearly uh, expressed that there was no surplus, surplus of ball fields in Iowa City. And that's where I learned, uh, you know, I started looking for the first time at comparisons with other local cities. Uh, North Liberty, uh, their ball field system includes nine ball field, a nine ball field complex at Penn Meadows, and five single fields similar to Happy Hollow, uh, three of which are located at elementary schools and two that are located at parks. North Liberty's use of both complexes and single fields ensures sufficient supply. Uh, they have an amazing, uh, ratio of seven fields to ten thousand residents. Uh, Iowa City's by contrast is somewhere between two to three fields, depending upon how many fields you're counting. If it's sixteen, it's a little over two per ten thousand. And, and lastly, uh, so, so that, uh, finishing that thought, the, the, the complexes and the single fields combined have, uh, that high ratio, but they're also well distributed. That's the other, I think, important consideration, and why I think number four is so important, is to try to expand the, the network and distribution of the ball fields. And then lastly, I would just say that Michael noted and affirmed, uh, was affirmed by some, some of the four, four hundred and thirty-seven petitioners in, in saying that Happy Hollow Ball Field has carved out a unique niche in Iowa City. It is cherished for its memories, as well as its unique natural setting, somewhat removed from the surrounding cityscape. These qualities have been strengthened by the beautiful new shelter and restroom, and will further be enhanced by the Prairie Restoration and future park improvements. So I think what I, my real takeaway from this whole process was that, uh, I, I feel that the maintenance issue is really the driving issue here. And I, I do encourage us to, as North Liberty has, and looking at the, um, softball, baseball website, uh, that site indicated there were, I think, over thirty sponsors for that program. Uh, so that is something that I hope we can make progress on. Uh, I do think Happy Hollow is a special and unique ball field. I would like to see if there might be opportunities uh, in other parts of Iowa City, perhaps with the recreational fields, to expand that opportunity. But what we're discussing now is Happy Hollow, and I certainly would ask that you support, uh, restoring the ball field.
So thoughts on that? Well, I'm, I might start. Um, so I, I appreciate the petition that was submitted. Um, but just like we've seen here recently where whether it was a project that was kinda in the pipe years ago that was just being activated, or it was something that, um, we didn't totally, you know, reach out to, uh, people that wanted to weigh in on it. I am not against looking at the change, but I do believe that it should be vetted by the community. Um, whether that is through, conduct, number five, which is conducting a survey to get input from neighborhood and youth sports associations. Um, I think that would be important before we go and make this change, and then make the change, and then it's, find out that, um, maybe there's a different idea or a different desire for this, uh, for this area. Um, I also, um, you know, would, uh, after that survey is done, or even simultaneously while conducting the survey, maybe there's an opportunity to do number four as well. Um, and I'm not exactly sure how that will play out, but I appreciate everybody that weighed in on this and signed the petition, but I really do believe that, um, we need to do number five first. that we need to do number five first.
I think that would be a good idea, but I think, as John said, he, that petition included a lot of people from the sports field, the coaches and the players that have played on that field. So I think that's a good place to start and, and, but if we need to look at it a little bit further, I would be in favor of also looking at number five with community input, but I still think that it would need to be put back to the skin field.
I'll be perfectly honest with everything else we've had on our agenda. And quite frankly, the importance I have, have put on making sure that I was doing all the things for the Black Lives Matter issues and the COVID. I have not given this the attention that it deserves. And based on that, I'm not prepared to give recommendation one way or another. I really want to make sure I give this careful consideration. I think when, when staff and Parks and Rec have gone through, you know, a process and have made plans and changes and then we get significant input to the contrary, I really want to make sure I have ample time to, to look at all those and quite candidly, I can't do that tonight.
So I think staff is kind of in a direction. So.
Can we bring this again later or we have to do it today? I really also I also need more time really on this. To be honest.
Does that work similarly? Mayor, I, I think that, you know, I appreciate the work that the residents have put into this, but I do think in the last couple of months, our, you know, our focus has been on, on other issues and I'm not inclined to, to support converting it back, you know, based on what's in front of us here, but I would be willing to defer it.
Yes. Jeff, does that put staff in a bind if we don't give you direction for a couple of weeks?
No, there's, there's really no urgency from a staff standpoint. It's, it's a, it's a usable park feature now. Just a question of whether we want to go back to the way it was before. So that can be done this summer, this fall, next spring, two years from now. There's really no urgency for us.
Okay. Thank you. Then I would like to defer this for at least a couple of weeks till we have maybe a little more time to review it.
I was thinking that.
Yep. So I'm in favor of deferring, but can we defer until August 4th at least?
That's fine with me.
I'm seeing some head shaking. Okay. All right. So we'll defer into August 4th. Item, we'll move, any other items from June 25th?
Yeah, I honestly, I apologize because I don't recall which are our packets it was in, but there was a letter from a taxi driver who wanted to, who wanted to renew the license, but said it requires, you only has two taxis right now, it requires four. And my question is, what, what's the history behind that regulation? Why is it the way it is?
Well, I have Jeff.
Yeah. So is someone still new enough on council that I, that this is the first time I run into this?
We can provide the council with some, some background memo if you'd like, but the, the short of it is, is we, previous experience, it would be that we would get a lot of small, kind of one-off companies that would run taxi services, particularly around the football season. And I think it was, there were some negative experiences expressed by the residents about the service they were getting in some of these companies that weren't necessarily in it for the long haul. So the, the minimum of four cab, the minimum requirement for four taxi cab was really to ensure that the companies were strongly invested in the long term in Iowa City and, and with that investment would provide the type of service that we would want our residents and visitors to the community to, to experience. But that's, you know, for those who've been on council for, for more than a few years, you know, that it seems about every year we're, we're analyzing our taxi ordinance and, and debating tweaks in it. So we'd be happy to provide you some, some background on that, that particular rule and other changes. Certainly when we had the, when Uber and Lyft came to town, there was just a ton of discussions about cab ordinances and that's probably been a couple of years, but that's probably been the most recent review of the ordinance.
I mean, given the proliferation of Uber and Lyft, although I expect they're not so busy right now, I personally would, would appreciate that.
All right.
Just verifying, I saw several head nods. Is the full council want us to go down that path? Or a majority of you? Yep.
Yeah, I think especially for our new counselors, that would be really good to have a little bit of history on that.
All right. Any other item from June 25th? July 2nd. There is, which has already been mentioned, the joint entities agenda, well, joint entities meeting, which is going to be July 20th. We've heard that the topic is going to be focused on COVID-19, maybe some collaborative efforts. Are there any other agenda items that council wants to bring up?
Related to COVID-19, I spoke to some supervisors and I think we find it's a good time to talk about how can we help like, like sustain help for undocumented people in the community? In Johnson County in general, and like, whether that would be like, kind of advocating or doing something. Anyway, they, they asked me if I can put it on the, on the joint entity, again, the meeting.
Did I hear the title be sustained help for undocumented?
Something like that. You know, I really don't know what the title should be, but it is like, instead of like helping them like this way and that way and just like short time and, you know, how can we really think about as entity about helping like, like, like sustain, like sustainable time or something like that? I don't know.
So not really related to COVID.
But due to COVID right now, if we can do that and going forward, if there is another crisis came, what we going to do to them, you know?
I'm not in, at least I'll comment, I'm not in opposition to that. I do wonder if we wouldn't have those conversations ourselves to try to figure out what our role and position would be before we take it to a broader, you know, ask of other municipalities. Unless there are some specific examples that you can either share with us as solutions or ways we can partner. Certainly, I think we can elevate the undocumented people for any COVID-19 relief. But I would be very interested in learning maybe some, or brainstorming at some point, ways in which we can help our undocumented individuals within our community. My only challenge is, you know, if we, you know, pose that idea without any examples right now. Of course, we have examples for COVID-19.
We really don't have any like solid solution that we can propose. That's why we want to brainstorm together and think about ways. We don't have to solve it on that meeting or we don't have to come up with something, but like, oh, if they're like, what do you think we can do? Maybe somebody will have a creative solution or just like speaking about it, the fact that this is happening in our community, how can we really help those people?
One question I have is, is there anyone that can give maybe an overview of some of the challenges that undocumented individuals face in our community? Because I think that would be a great starting point for education.
We can bring somebody to talk about that. To give us like, like a very quick presentation.
Yeah.
And we don't have to make any decision. After that, we can't talk about it and yeah. I can recruit someone.
So I would be in favor of it. I'm not sure what other counselor thoughts are. I'm seeing some head nodding. So, all right, we will add that to the, our agenda to submit to the joint entities meeting. Any other agenda item? And then we'll, and you can get with us, because that'd be before our next council meeting, the night before. Who will be that representative? Are we, because I think a presentation would be important. Are people in agreement with that as well? We'll have the item on the agenda, maybe a brief presentation.
University Heights Louise Fromm is organizing, so.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Great. So no, no other agenda items? I don't hear any.
What's the time is meeting on the 20?
4:30.
4:30, okay, thank you.
Used to get there for cookies and coffee at four, but that won't be happening. All right, item number five. Well, let's go to July 2nd. We're still there. So number five, IP5 memo from the Neighborhood and Development Services Director. I'm not sure if Tracy Heisho is still here.
No, Tracy was unable to stay on tonight. In, in short, I think the council was aware you've been contacted by Habitat and the Johnson County Affordable Homes Coalition about a partnership to expand and really stretch the impact of the South District Home Ownership Program that we kicked off last year. And so Tracy had some discussions with Habitat and where they landed is outlined in the memo, but it's essentially a pilot program that we would do this year in which we would, the FY21 budget just included one additional duplex for the South District. We would expand that to two duplexes through use of some unallocated CDBG dollars right now. The city would use those CDBG dollars and do our program as we've done in the past. And then in order to afford Habitat some more flexibility, we would get them the local dollars from the budget so they don't have the, the federal constraints on them. And Habitat would do a, a rehabilitation of a duplex. And we think there's some, some real merit to try and this. I think Habitat through their network could, could help us stretch those rehab dollars, but they could also help expand the pool of available properties because they're willing to be a landlord if needed in a situation which one duplex unit may be available and the other is still occupied. Really, that's not a good role for the city to be playing. But Habitat's willing to do that and that allows them to stage the rehab without forcing displacement so we can hold true to that value of this program. So happy to answer any questions, but in short, it would be expanding the program for fiscal year 21 and working with Habitat on one of those two homes. Then after we're done with that project, we would all be able to kind of learn from that experience and decide if this completely becomes their, their project going forward, if it still makes sense to split it or if it makes more sense for the city to keep it. But we're excited about it and we appreciate the Affordable Homes Coalition and Habitat bringing that to us.
Well, I'm supportive of this. I was really impressed with the conversation that I had. I can't remember who else was on that call. Might have been Janice and Laura with Sarah Baron and Heath Brewer, Sarah from the Affordable Homes Coalition and Heath from Habitat. I just think there's, as you've mentioned, Jeff, a real chance to kind of leverage some city dollars to get some programming experience and contacts through Habitat and get more bang for our buck, quite frankly, by using Habitat. So I'm really interested in the idea of trying this for a pilot for a year and see, see where we want to go with it from there.
I've been really excited about this project since its very beginning, the South District duplex plan. And so the thought of having a partner that can kind of help, help us along with it and, and since Tracy is in favor of it, then that's good. So I would be in favor of this also as a trial, see how it goes.
I think this is a really exciting opportunity for a great partnership between the city and Habitat and building on what, what we know and what we learned through what we've undertaken and their expertise. So I agree with what everybody said, but it's very, very exciting and great for the South District.
It's great to be able to leverage good nonprofit partners for something as valuable as this.
I have to agree, leveraging resources, this makes all the, this creates opportunity, I think, for the city. And it definitely creates opportunity in what our intentions were for residents within the South District.
Yeah. The other thing I like about this is Habitat will have more of a presence in that district. So I think that helps too in terms of gaining further traction with the effort when you have that ongoing presence and sense of relationship to the neighborhood.
Yes, I agree.
All right. I would make a comment that our mayor pro tem is short of words right now.
I guess, you know, it made it easier for me when everybody say like, yeah, I agree, I don't have to fight.
Well, I'm just saying, and it's almost 9:30, so.
Yes, I'm good. I'm seeing everybody angry about this and which is good.
Great.
Yeah.
Any other agenda items from July 2nd that anyone wants to point out? All right, hearing none. Any other items for the good of the cause tonight?
I hope that we adjourn.
All right, well, there we go. Adjourned. Have a good night and thanks again, counselors, as well as staff and all of the public for all your hard efforts.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Mayor. Good night.
Good night.